To remind everyone that tomorrow, September 21st, is National Opioid Awareness Day. And it's a day to remember family and friends that have been lost to overdoses and promote strategies that we can prevent future overdoses and deaths. Also tomorrow is International Peace Day. There will be a peace rally tomorrow evening at the Historical Courthouse, a day the United Nations devotes to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. And I look forward to seeing you there at the International Day of Peace tomorrow evening in the borough.
Thank you. I will keep mine brief as well. Congrats on an incredible restaurant festival. Sorry, the rain kind of ruined the end a bit, but incredible day. And then just a word of caution. I think I always mention it in the beginning of a school year about school bus stops and being mindful of those. And now I firsthand have a, my son is on the bus. And I've witnessed cars fly right by a bus multiple times. I hear it from my wife every day, can't you do something about this? So just be careful, slow down, watch for children. And it is required by law to stop at a bus stop when a bus stops there. Okay, item five on our agenda is discussion item for short-term rentals. And I think Ms. Camp is going to lead this off.
Thank you. So I was at the last two meetings where this item was discussed. I have a draft ordinance that we are working on. There was some correspondence from one of the owners in the township, I'm sorry, in the borough, who is interested obviously in having a short-term rental. Council had sent correspondence voicing some concerns and really legal issues based on the last draft. We talked about that at length at the last council meeting. They had cited a case that was decided in Austin, Texas, that had a requirement, a residency requirement. And this council brought forward and said that if Borough Council continued with the draft that required residency for owners who want to have short-term rentals, that potentially that could get challenged on similar legal grounds. And that was that it would be a restriction on interstate commerce. So we had that conversation at the last meeting. And we pulled counsel as to where, you know, what, number one, what districts do you want to allow the use in? And then in those specific districts, do you want to have the residency requirement? So I summarized what I believe I heard members of council in terms of their desires from the last meeting. Unfortunately, I don't have four people that want the same thing. So we don't have a consensus of council to move this forward in any way. And I just want to come back and ask if anybody is willing to change their opinion to, so we have consensus by four people of council to move it forward.
I am willing to change and move to residency requirements in NC 1 and 2. That would only make three though, but it's better than two.
So that would give us three people. That would be Patrick, Brian, and Sheila would be comfortable with that. So Bernie, are you, you still want to keep it only in the town center?
Yes, only town center with no residence requirement.
Lisa, you're all districts, no residency. Okay.
Still not there? Okay.
Do you have consensus if we wanted, I know we talked a little bit about starting out with the town center district. And I know it sounds like we do have consensus that it's appropriate in the town center with no residency. Maybe we start with that and see how that goes. And then if that goes well, bring up the discussion later on bringing it into other districts. Is that, is that a method? I mean, that, that's really what brought this. And I'm not suggesting that you're adopting this ordinance because of the litigation that was gone, the zoning appeal. But that's what really brought the conversation to light, to just bring it to your attention of, is this a use that you want to call out specifically as an allowable use in the town center? So that would address that particular property. It would allow others in the town center to have that use, subject to the standards we all agreed upon.
I'd be willing to, to have it in town center only with no residency requirement.
What would happen to the, that these properties or short-term rentals that already exist throughout the borough, not just in town center? To the extent that this ordinance would be passed and not permit them in those districts, and the zoning officer was aware of the property addresses, he would cite them as he has under, under prior, under the current ordinance. He would have to issue a notice of violation, give them a period of time to come into compliance.
So I think it sounds like Ms. Camp, that we have, you do have a consensus that you could move forward with town center only. So you could move forward with that in terms of getting an ordinance written up. That seems like that's the only thing you have consensus on at this point. Does that sound right? Okay. Okay.
Okay. So what I'll do is I will finalize that draft, bring it back to Kevin to bring to the Planning Commission, send it to the County Planning Commission, and then it'll come back for you to decide if you want to have a hearing on it. Okay?
Mr. Allen.
If this goes wrong, if we decide we want to move back, are we able to do that? Or is this like a one-way street here?
No, oh no, you can always change the ordinance.
Yep, thank you.
But you can always do the galley rule. You can always go backwards.
But you would grandfather in anybody who's already?
Only ones that then after the ordinance was passed, went and did the appropriate process, got the permit, registered as, as a short-term rental. Those would be the only ones that would be grandfathered in.
Ms. Camp, the, the parking requirement. I remember there was a parking requirement that you had to have one parking spot. Are we still abiding by that?
The, the last draft that I think we agreed upon was in the town center, there would be no parking requirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, that being the case, I think you have some direction now. Okay, all right. Any other comment on this? We will move on to, I lost my agenda, hold on. Item number six, which is our discussion agenda, we have two items. Item A is to appoint, appointment of alternates to the Civil Service Commission. I think it would be appropriate, and my recommendation would be to make a motion to appoint the two applicants that we interviewed last night to those two positions.
Mr. Stefano. A second.
Great. We have a motion and a second to appoint those two that interviewed last night. Any public comment? Okay, that being the case, Mr. Metrick, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano.
Yes. Motion carries seven zero to appoint. So congrats to those two applicants. And as always, thank you to anybody who's willing to serve on a volunteer basis. We really, really appreciate it, and you are needed. Thank you. Item B is to adopt a, or six B is to adopt the resolution to approve preliminary land development application for 330 West Market Street. And there is an attachment. How do we want to begin this? Do you want to start, Mr. Nagel, or do you want to? Sure. Okay. Mr. Khan?
Good evening, everybody. Eli Khan. I got to watch last night's meeting on Zoom. And I wanted to address, I guess, really two primary issues that were discussed at length. The design guidelines and as well as the fee-in lieu concept. So I've done a number of projects in town that have revolved around the design guidelines. And the design guidelines, as most of you know, is this document. Usually comes in a spiral bound, if you have an original copy of it, done in 2002. And they are not specific. Buildings should be red brick. Buildings should have X, Y, and Z. And these design guidelines are in stark contrast to your own SALDO ordinance that has its own set of design guidelines if you're going taller than 60 feet. So as an applicant developer landowner, you know, you guys draw up the rulebook and you ask the applicant and the applicant's architect to live by that rulebook. Your rulebook has a number of significantly conflicting concepts. And it's not the first time an elected body has heard that from me because I've mentioned it a number of times in the last 20 years. The design guideline, which I take seriously, and my architect Neil Liebman from Bernardin, who has designed, you know, probably a dozen of the, you know, bigger buildings in Westchester. On page six of this design guideline, under intent of this design guideline, I'm just going to read two little sentences for you. When you're outside of the Harb district, the quote, "The design guidelines may also be used as a technical resource for property owners outside of the historic district," which we are in. And then a paragraph down, "This document is not meant to be used as a strict rigid rulebook. It's a guideline which we take seriously." When we first presented this plan to the Planning Commission, actually, when we first presented this plan to the neighbors at Mitch's gym, where we had about 70 folks show up, Dale Friend, a neighbor, the founding partner of Friends and Friends Architect, one of the most renowned historic architects maybe on the East Coast, stood up and said, "I am not happy with X, Y, and Z." And we went to the Planning Commission, he came to the Planning Commission. I told him, "I'd be happy to meet with you, Dale." I have great respect in what he's done, his, his work. We completely redesigned the entry to the building based upon his comment. We spent months at the Planning Commission. At the end, the last meeting at the Planning Commission, there were some issues about design. We have people on the Planning Commission who want it to be red brick and specifically to look like the bicentennial parking garage. Why can't it look like the bicentennial parking garage? I don't want it to look like the bicentennial parking garage. You know, we have another member of the Planning Commission says, "I like the design." It's our job to design a building that we think meets the intent of this ordinance, not meant to be a strict rigid rulebook, this document, and meet your SALDO and fit in something that I can be proud of, and I've been proud of every single project I've ever done in the borough, and something that will lease, something that is attractive to 22-year-olds and 82-year-olds. Because at Chestnut Square, I have people in their twenties through their nineties living in that building. I would not design a building that I thought would negatively impact the borough, nor negatively impact the ability to lease it. Because that's one thing I am an expert in. I spend my time talking to people who live in these buildings. So I know what people are looking for. It's not a glass box. It's not an ultra-modern building. Is it contemporary? Yes. You know, this borough has put the F and M building on a pedestal for as long as I've been here, which was 1982 is when I got to the borough. That building was built in like 1905. In 1905, there were no seven-story skyscrapers with this ornate crazy design in. I can only imagine what Borough Council and Planning Commission members thought of that in 1902 or whenever it was built or constructed. It was crazy for the time. And, you know, 120 years later, now it's a, you know, it's a revered building. So I guess my point is I'm proud of the design these guys have come up with. It's been modified. It was modified a week ago after the last Planning Commission meeting, where one of the members said, "We would like the Wayne Street facade to have more brick on it." And in addition to other comments that other Planning Commission members, and there were, you know, I can't meet everyone's, I can't accommodate everyone's taste. We changed the Wayne Street facade to had a whole middle panel, about 50% more of that facade is going to have brick on it to match the Market Street facade. So I have listened multiple times. We've changed the design multiple times. And we believe we need this. You guys have an issue that you have to solve. If you want to solve it, to figure out which one of these, the SALDO or this design guideline, you know, needs work, probably they both need work if you don't want to have the same, the same issue. I'm happy to answer questions on that. I do have Neil Liebman here, the architect, who can go into more detail because he did submit on August 22nd, a detail of how he believes as the architect of the project, of the architect of many projects in the borough, how it meets the, the, the intent of this document, if you'd like to hear from him. So we can do that, or I can jump right to the issue of the, of the rec fee-in lieu of. Well, why don't I just do that and then you guys can hit Neil up?
Yeah, I was going to say if anybody has questions about the Harb or the, I'm sorry, the Harb guidelines or the SALDO, Mr. Allen?
So just to kick this off, first thing, I do appreciate your taste overall in the buildings you've done in the borough. And I think relative to some other large developments we've seen, I think it's a cut above firstly.
Thank you.
I guess my first question, and again, I appreciate you willing to bend for planning. I appreciate that a lot. Are you willing to continue to do that as we kind of move from preliminary into final development plans? Is there still more flexibility with your team on some of the design issues?
So the, you've seen the renderings. I mean, there's a lot goes into the detailing of these buildings once we start architecture. We have not done, the only architecture we've done is conceptual architecture. But this, this is the flavor of the buildings. I mean, I took seriously the comment that the Planning Commission made about there's nine materials. There's actually not nine materials. There may be, you know, there might be a, a, a hardy siding that is in two different colors. That's not two different materials, same material, maybe a different hue. But yeah, we're always trying to refine it. You know, I, I want the building to be timeless. I want the building. I mean, the one thing I hate is looking at a building that was designed, and Neil's heard me say it a million times. I don't want to design a building that's 20 years later, you're like, oh my God, you know, what was I thinking? Trying to design buildings that, you know, 100 years from now, they're like, yeah, that holds up. That still looks good. I've done a lousy job with interior lobbies because it seems like every 25 years I'm looking at these lobbies going, you know, you know, peach, peach-colored tile. You know, when, when was that in fashion? But it was in the, in the mid eighties. So yeah, we're continuing to refine the design. But as I said, the Planning Commission specifically, like, it's not going to be, it's not going to be red brick. It's not going to be the bicentennial garage. That's not what I want it to be. It's to me, that's not what the people I'm trying to rent it to are looking for. And candidly, that's not what this document tells me it has to be. So yes, it's continuing to be refined.
And I'm, I agree with a lot of what you said. I'm curious, just with your professional opinion, what's being built now in 20 years that will not hold up well? My prediction is, it's kind of characterized well by the building next to Moss, where it's like completely stratified. It's, you look at one section and then you go to the next and you're like, where are we? And then the next section, you're like, okay, now we're somewhere totally new. Then the next section is kind of like a nineties hotel. It's wild to me how different all those sections are. And I'm not saying that's where I think this design is at all. I do think, I'm concerned by just the amount of siding and the amount of different color siding there is that I don't think it's anywhere near the property I was mentioning before. But I think there is like a mild flavor of that going on which concerns me.
Nick, we talked about that. We had the whole architectural team on a conference call. And it is something we're going to look at potentially lessening the number of colors and things like that. I mean, it's a big building. And, and you're trying to develop, you know, when, when you, when you build a brick building, an all-brick building and it's 100% red brick, like many big warehouses were built and apartment buildings were built. It's just like, hey, this is what it is. When you're doing something of, but today, when you're doing something where you're trying to have some, some little bit of flavor, it, you know, listen, it can get carried away sometimes. But we have some history in looking at these buildings post-construction. And, you know, I, I really put pressure on the design team so that when the building's done, we're not looking at it and going, why didn't we see that? I mean, we have computers that can look at every aspect of the building in great detail. But we are, we are looking at that. I want to look at this building, and again, I know people have made comments, oh, it's not red brick, it's a, a beiges gray or whatever. I mean, I mean, it's, we put dark gray brick on Chestnut Square, like dark gray. And people were like, what? Dark gray brick? How, you know, and it looks great. So, you know, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on them. And we're gonna, we will ultimately build a panel out there before we ultimately choose every material. And it'll have brick, it'll have the siding, it'll have the windows. So we can really see what it's going to look like.
Great. And the, the hotel in Charleston where that inspiration was drawn, I think is, I think there's a lot I like about that design as well. So I'm not like saying it's like totally out in left field at all. The other concern I had was, I think one of the bigger ones for me was that the metal panel in the corner, I guess, it's like that main corner, I think it's E15. Like, how does that reflect light? Like, what does that look like? I was, it seemed, that seemed extra out of place to me when I look at the surrounding area.
I don't know the answer to that. You know, Neil may have some better comments on it. I mean, I know oftentimes we are looking at metal these days. It's a, you know, it's, it's not a new material, it's an old material. But if it's done wrong, it looks horrible. And I've seen examples of that where you see people use it in oil cans and it just doesn't look right. The 44 West where Sedona is and the, and the vacancy, all of that black material is metal. Now, if you go to New York City and look at the oldest neighborhoods with, you know, four-story buildings and the first floor is retail, it's metal panel, it's not wood. We spent a fortune on that, on that metal panel to try to make it authentic looking. We have to make sure this looks right, or it's, you're right, it's not, it's not going to. But I, I would defer to Neil on that because I'm, I haven't looked as closely at that specific detail.
And then maybe this is a question better for our legal counsel, but should we go ahead with preliminary land development and then maybe disagree that enough was done and that there wasn't that flexibility we're talking about tonight? What, like, what's our recourse like in that scenario?
Well, before you, before you ask, I guess the question I have, and I have for all of you, as I have had for all, every Planning Commission member, is how do I satisfy you and you and you? Because the Planning Commission, you know, two people over here had a problem. And Diane LeBald was like, "I like the design." You're never going to, and she's, you know, she's been on councils, like, you're never going to make everybody happy. So that thereby comes the issue where am I, do you continue to modify the design to satisfy one or two people? That's, you know, it's hard to do because it's a moving, some people may not care. You know, three people may, we don't really care. It's fine the way it is. So, but then you go down a rabbit hole and then all of a sudden, well, that doesn't look good. You know?
No, I totally agree. I agree with that. And I've done creative work as well where it's extremely frustrating working with groups. I guess my point, I'm kind of used to getting voted down six to one. It happens enough here. So that's fine. Like, I don't expect you to bend over just for me.
Right.
But I guess my question is more if four or more of us are kind of on the same page about this, where do we go from there if we've approved the preliminary land development?
Again, my, I'm not a lawyer, but my, I guess my position is, unless you're telling me I haven't met this, which is pretty hard to do when it actually says it's just a, it's not a rulebook, it's just a design guideline. I don't know how your counsel says you can say, you know, hey, they didn't meet this. So you can, you cannot. So you, as I said to the Planning Commission, we're continuing to look at the building. We just made a change a week ago. You know, if these guys think there's, you know, again, Dale Friend came up with a great idea. Our guys responded to it. Building looks better than it did originally. And I'm happy and proud that the guy was willing to stand up. And I'm happy my team met with him and took his advice. He didn't say, "Do this." He said, "This is how it feels." And my guys came up with a, with a, with a solution that he was happy with. So.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great. At Chestnut Square. Lessons learned on materials used on the exterior of the buildings.
Yeah.
This building here, people ask me what this building's going to look like. I say, "Go look at Chestnut Square, and it's going to be very similar and it'll look alike with all the different surfaces." There were some failures on the exterior of Chestnut Square around the, the porches and stuff like that.
There were.
What lessons learned? Did we go there? And what aren't we going to use on Market Street?
So we had a, we had a stucco failure, which there'll never be any more stucco on any building that I own. And a lot of these buildings are designed with certain systems. And again, Neil can speak a little bit more in detail to this. But, you know, architects are looking for better ways to assemble balconies. And you can buy these store-bought systems, quote unquote. A manufacturer comes who's designing these for multifamily buildings, or you, he can come up with a design himself and do it. or you, he can come up with a design himself and do it. And, you know, the system that we used had some flaws to it. So, you know, Bernie, I'm building in a townhouse apartment complex in Exton right now on Route 30. The clubhouse was three weeks away from being completed. We had just installed a $50,000 golf simulator in it. And the building burned to the ground because we had six different investigators from insurance companies in the township and the county. And there was some kind of a mechanical, you know, failure. I mean, it's, you know, and my, you know, we're rebuilding it now. And I'm like, are we sure? We've, I mean, no one said this is what it caused, what caused it. Are we sure we're not repeating the same thing? So we learn every time of a failure. And again, as, you know, Bernard and any, any architectural firm is oftentimes responsible for that. Hey, what did we do wrong here? Or did we design it right? It was built wrong. But each one of the, these are, you know, these are big buildings. I mean, they're, so we are learning 100% Bernie.
I just wanted to make sure whatever, I didn't know what happened, but I watched a lot of the money being spent.
Yep.
And I wanted to make sure that type of surface wasn't going to come over on Market Street.
It will not.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does it look like there's any other questions or comments about design? So, oh, you do have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So in talking about the design, because it's difficult to see from these little snapshots. And so I guess maybe the architect would be helpful here. Because it's hard for me to understand this design and what you're going for. Hopefully this is a timeless design because.
It's a what? I didn't hear that.
Timeless. Hopefully this proves to be a timeless design. It feels very similar to what is going up and has gone up and down in town in Exton. And so I think good design always has to have a nod to the past with the eye on the future. So that it incorporates a little bit of all of those elements. So I guess my question is, what are the elements of the building? Because it was brought up in planning that there was nine different types of surfaces. You're saying it was less than that. So what are they? Where are they? If you don't mind, just a brief synopsis of, and the color, is it gray? Is it brown? Is it, I mean, no offense, but when I first see that one picture, which has the entire side of it, I don't think it's that, any of those photos. It's the long, long photo. Maybe it's the Market Street view. It, because the building is, you know, it's mammoth. It feels very, it felt very institutional, like a prison from the outside, just the one, the one view. Now, when I look at these, of course, they're clearer, but I'm just wondering the textures, the materials, all of that being used.
So Lillian, primarily we're dealing with brick, a cementist-based siding material and some metal panel. Am I missing anything, Neil? And in different colors. I mean, the specific brick is a brick that it wasn't designed in fantasy land. It was designed because they've seen this brick and, and feel it works well, both with the neighborhood and is, just looks good on the building. The darker material up top is a siding material. And there is some, some metal panel on the building as well. Go ahead.
Let me first address your comment about the actual colors, because if you look at the small television here, the brick looks pink here. And if you look at this image, it looks more bony color, tan. So I will tell you that as much as we have, these are all, Eli's correct, we, these are all generated with computers. They're modeled. You take the brick that we want, any screen that I put it on or any piece of paper that I printed on, it's gonna, from one to the other, they're all going to look different. I can't, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that is the exact color. What Eli mentioned earlier is we go through a great painstaking process of building mockups that are almost the size of this wall behind you with every material that we use on the project. The actual brick, the actual siding, the actual metal panel, we will put them on there, the windows, everything. Because it all works in unison. It doesn't, one piece doesn't work by itself. It all has to work together. Regardless, I want to just address, so you had asked about the, this design concept is all about the, I'll call it the positives and the negatives, the voids and the, and the, the things that you want to take away to, it is a big building. So we looked at the entire facade along Market Street to start with, because that's, that's our, excuse me, Market Street.
Scroll up Jeff to the first page.
The elevation. So, so that, that's a flat elevation of the entire length of Market Street. We start with that because we know that it's 390 feet long, that building. It's a big building. We don't want it to be, we want different materials. We want it to be broken up. We want it to be something that is not monotonous and continuous for 390 feet. We have ins and outs. You're not really seeing them in these images very well. You're not seeing that in that elevation for sure. You can see it a little bit more in the perspectives. The facades are pulled in and out, again, to get these positives and negatives, to get these offsets and reveals. The idea of the top, you mentioned the dark color. Again, I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's black or it's green or it's blue or whatever, being a little bit facetious. But I need to see that with the actual materials that we have to make sure. But the concept is the offset, is to make the bottom four stories stand proud of what's behind it, to make that more apparent. That's the, that's the design challenges that we put into this project. So I hope that gives you a little bit better understanding. The, the number of materials overall is also based on the fact that we don't have one facade here. We have four facades. We have four sides of the building. I don't want to put all that brick on the backside because it's, it doesn't fit in. I'd rather use more of a siding material. So we changed the colors to break, again, to break down the masses of this. There are a lot of colors. But there's not a lot of colors on any one, if you add them all up around the entire building, there's a lot, there's several colors. But as Eli's correct, there's brick, there's siding, and metal panels in some locations. So it's done intentionally. It's not, this is not haphazardly put together. The color palette is similar to what you see on, on the renderings, probably closer to this screen than that screen. But I can't tell you exactly. I mean, again, I have bricks in my office. I have metals. I mean, we'll go into that. And we're working on projects now that are bigger than this and we're changing the bricks. We didn't like the contrast. So when we did, when we did the mockups. So hopefully that answers. And another really important design piece here that no one has really talked about, you know, Woolerton Alley has residents behind it. We purposely oriented this building where we have these large cutouts so that it's not a big, long facade along Woolerton Alley. So where you have the, there's a second floor resident, recreational area. So the masses of the buildings that actually are closest to these residents are the smallest masses of the whole project.
Neil and I are working on a project in downtown Doylestown where we flipped this building. So the courtyards are facing out. And the mass of the full wall of the building faces the back of the building. And in Doylestown, the rear of the property, there isn't a residential neighborhood. And the town wanted, you know, they had nobody to really worry about in back of it. And these courtyards are actually facing the main street. So you could like be on the swimming pool, you know, in the swimming pool or on the deck, literally being one level above, you know, one story above Market Street, so to speak. But again, here, right from the start, we knew that Price Street neighbors needed to have as much breakup as possible there.
Can I ask you to talk about the Market Street side and what the insets, how the sidewalk? Because most of the residents of Westchester are going to experience this either from the alley or the sidewalk, primarily the sidewalk. Can you just talk through that experience?
Sure. Like, can you go back to the renderings a little? Please. Thank you. It's hard to see.
Let's zoom in to the top left one. Yep.
I have a point, Eli.
There you go.
Yeah. It's difficult to see from any one point, but we did spend a lot of time and attention to the streetscape, not just to the building itself. So this is all part of it. And again, we changed materials, do different things as we get closer to streetscape so that you can have that experience. There is a combination that probably, probably shows best in plan, but there is a combination of planters along the building to break up the edges here. There are insets for benches. The sidewalk itself, the minimum distance of the sidewalk is about six feet. The total where, where there's benches and stuff, it grows to, I think, 12 feet or 15 feet, Joe? I can't remember. 15. We have spent some time with, you know, we know where our landscapes are. We're going to have tree grates. We're going to have light poles that, you know, are more historical, not, they're not historical, but they're, they're more traditional in nature. So we're creating that streetscape all along the entire length of Market.
We, Phily, we realize that nobody sees the building from this perspective unless they're walking west on Market Street. This is all for this whole process. The reality of this is the only thing people see are these people walking down the street, you know, and what they're saying right here. And that's why we do these little, little planters and benches and things. And we've learned over the years, as we've learned at 44 West, you know, we're going to have to have skateboard resistant surfaces and benches where people can sleep and what have. But this is the experience that 99.9% of borough residents experience. And, and we spent a lot of time and effort on that experience.
Okay. If there's no other design questions, then I think you can address the payment in lieu.
Okay.
Or lack thereof.
Thank you. So until 20 minutes ago, I was unaware that the borough potentially changed their ordinance after we did Chestnut Square. the, and Brian believes that your current ordinance is, contradicts itself a number of times, but that's for you guys to figure out. I'm spending well over a million dollars on these courtyards. These courtyards, the pool, the planters, the, I mean, we spend a fortune on creating these environments. And if no, if, if you all haven't been to Chestnut Square to see that courtyard and that, those amenity areas, they're the highlight of these projects. When you're leasing these projects and, and, you know, the Green Tree Building has no, you know, they have a lobby that's, you know, 15 feet wide by, by 15 feet long. That's it. There's no amenity area. People rent these buildings because of all of the amenity area. You know, the apartments are the apartments, but the money that we spend on the common areas, the libraries, the pool and ping pong tables, the golf simulators, the fitness centers, the pools, the yoga studios, all of that stuff is what really excites people to move into these buildings. If the borough doesn't see that investment as taking heat off of the public parks, I honestly don't understand that because according, I believe your ordinance, every single building built requires a recreational area or a recreation fee in lieu of. Now, I monitor a lot of the buildings that get built in Westchester. And if the ordinance was changed after Chestnut Square, which would have been 2013, 14, and I assume the borough has charged every single project who didn't create a recreation area that was offered for dedication, they charged this fee in lieu of, then I would say to you, I'll meet the ordinance. And I'll put together the 35% of the land area, which is about 3,800 square feet, and I'll dedicate it to the borough. And you can have what the ordinance actually contemplates. You can have a green area. But we started this process believing that the borough precedent was the courtyards met the ordinance. I didn't know the ordinance had been changed. I believe the intent of creating these recreation areas is so all the residents aren't going, oh my God, I need a place to go. I'm going to go down to Horace Pippin Park, or I'm going to go to Everhard Park. I get the idea of it. You're, if you're overburdening the park system, you should contribute to it. So I guess my position is, is that if the borough has applied this fee in lieu of recreation to every single project that's been done, then we will, we will create, you know, it may be the side of the building. It may be the back of the building. You know, we're asking for a landscape waiver because we can't jam all the landscaping onto the property. You know, maybe we reduce the landscaping further and, you know, we create a strip for some shuffleboard or whatever. And we pay a bigger fee in lieu of landscaping to get you more, you know, a better area back there. I don't know what you want. I actually don't think you want it. I actually think the borough doesn't want to own this. Because if the ordinance says, we'll offer it to dedicate, so we'll say to you, you can have it. That's what the ordinance says. If I'm in your position, I don't want it. Not that, why should the borough take, you know, 3,800 square feet of recreation area? But again, that's what your ordinance says. So the, the building is somewhere, the non-structured parking of the building is about 205,000 square feet. The rec fee is 80 cents a foot. If Kevin makes us count the parking area, it's 300. So the rec fee is somewhere between 180,000 dollars and 300, or 275,000 dollars. So I just assume give you the, give you the required area that you've asked for in the ordinance. So it's, it's your ordinance. Again, it's, again, I think it's, it's flawed. I mean, if I were you, I wouldn't want it. I'd want, you know, I wouldn't want to cut the lawn and maintain the recreation area.
What, what, what area are you referring to specifically?
So we have an area here, which is where, you know, where we intend to meet our art requirement with some benches and things. And in the back of the building, we have two areas that are about 20 to 25 feet wide and 120 feet long. They're just grass areas. Through the planning commission process, at one point, originally, we showed those areas packed with landscaping. So there wasn't much there to use. And then some of the, some of the conversation came up at the planning commission. And we said, hey, why don't we do a green wall? We'll reduce the landscaping and we'll do a green wall there to make that area more usable, whether it be benches or a dog walk, which wasn't popular with, with the neighbors. But, you know, an actual area, pocket park, you know? So again, we could redo, you know, we could, you know, reduce the landscaping to a degree and create a pocket park contiguous, meets the 3,800 square foot area, and we'll offer it to dedication to the borough. And we've met our, we've met the requirement. So, but, you know, I also want to say, and it's important to be on record, because I anticipated that we were not paying this fee in lieu of recreation is why I agreed to the contribution to Horace Pippin, because it was brought to my attention that it was a park that was in need of help and recognizing that we were going to have an impact there. So, you know, again, I understand that the fee in lieu of recreation is at the borough's discretion. They can spend it wherever they want, where a voluntary contribution to Horace Pippin was supposed to go to Horace Pippin. So. But the reality for me is if you want, you know, you want the recreation area, we'll give it to you.
I think I need clarity on that area. I'm not quite sure where it is.
So.
Based on this.
On, on the area of the, that he's talking about.
Jeff, can you bring up the site plan?
Yeah. And, and so I know that one of the things sort of discussed was the idea of, rather than it being sort of a sudden death decision right this minute, putting in the resolution that that would be determined before and decided as part of final plan approval. So that way the borough has a chance to assess the sites and really take a look at it and determine basically whether or not the borough does want to accept the dedication of those or.
So are we looking at this?
Can step the building back. And this is the area that we are.
Go down a little further.
Trees and, trees and landscape. And where at one point it was intended, you know, we thought, well, maybe we just make it grass and it could be something that the residents could use and neighborhood could use. And it kind of, planning commission was, you know, some people liked it, some didn't. And I think it was brought to our attention that the university had tried one of these green walls that's actually affixed to the building. And it didn't actually grow anything that was green. So we said, all right, we'll get rid of it and we'll do, we'll do landscape. But these could be legitimate pocket parks that have a combination of grass or landscaping or paths or shuffleboard or.
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't know. I'm just, I mean, I'm looking at a picture here. This doesn't really help me 100%, but that does not seem like it meets the definition of recreational area by our definition of in the borough.
It may not now, but.
Yeah. And, and, and so I think that's where I think we would just kind of leave, we can, Mr. Nagel and I can work out language in the resolution that basically says that that will kind of be flushed out prior to.
The final.
Because I do think that it warrants more than us trying to make that decision or you trying to make that decision right now.
Yeah.
Just by looking at this, I think it'd be better if the borough had a chance to really kind of look at it, assess it, and then make that decision and, and work that out before, for final plan approval.
I would be agreeable of that. Because I, I'm, I'm, I mean, I can't make that decision right now looking at this picture. So I agree to that. If we could make that, resolve that by the final.
Understood. Yeah, no, I, I do too. Again, considering that we just found out a half hour ago that the ordinance had been changed. So my entire thought process on this changes as well.
If I, if I could, Mr. Stefano, I, I mean, I think of all the projects you've, you've done in, in the borough, they've all been, been great. And so I would hope by, by doing this, you know, obviously there's, you've done these projects before. I trust your judgment that we can, we can work this out, that you're going to make it good for the borough and good for you, obviously.
Sure.
So I would be willing to, to do that.
And maybe there's a hybrid. Again, the ordinance doesn't necessarily talk about a hybrid model, but again, I'm, I'm, I'm not running away. I'm, and I, again, I want, I want, I know I never make everybody happy, but I do my best at, you know, keeping my head tall. You ask Bill Scott that wherever, wherever he is. Thank God.
Thank God.
Okay. Is there any other outstanding things that we need to discuss? Anything else, Mr. Nagel? You have anything?
So, so from, I, I did get a chance to look through the resolution. Good evening, Brian Nagel, on behalf of the applicant. There's, there's two outstanding items that I, that I picked up on. One is paragraph six talks about the design guideline. I, I think we've demonstrated that that's been met. Neil's here to talk to it further if, if, if you don't think we're there. But I think that, that provision needs to say that council determines that the design guidelines have been met. And I know, Mr. Allen, you talk about like further tweaking and looking at the, at the finer details. I think Eli said that's going to happen anyway. So we'll have those discussions. And if you want to try to put language in there that captures that discussion that you were having, that would be fine. But I don't think that issue can stay open past tonight. The, the second one is that, that I didn't see in the resolution, it needs to be included is part of the project review with the planning commission and the ordinances is we provided information about the demolition of the existing buildings. That needs to be approved by council as part of this resolution. So if those two things are addressed, I think we're there.
And what's that last one? Like, are we missing something? I don't know.
No, and it was, it's addressed in a lot of the review letters and they did provide documentation and reports to it. Basically as part of, since there are quote historic resources on the property, basically they had to provide reports and information. They will need to get certain kinds of permits and other things. There's a process basically for the demolition of those. So basically we would put a section in the resolution saying that pursuant to section 112 dash 401, they would, you know, they could basically move forward with, move towards demolishing those.
That, that, that's correct. Just to clarify one point, there's no historic.
They're not historic.
On the property there. Any pro, any building that's over 50 years old in the borough is considered, considered a contributing resource. So before that gets demolished, first in this process, tonight, council needs to approve the demolition of the contributing resources. Once that happens, before my client can demolish those, we have to submit photographs and information about each building, which Mr. Liebman's office will handle. So we, we need that to be covered in the resolution.
And there's a, there's an outline, there's basically language in the ordinance about essentially what they need to do. So we would just say that, and my apologies for saying historic, I meant contributing resources. Yeah, we would just put it in that subject to that section of the ordinance. They would, they would be approved to move forward with that.
Okay.
Mr. Liebman's already had prepared reports that talk about each building. That's, that's already in, in the record of, of, of the land development proceeding. So we've covered that. That should be approved. And then before they demolish them, we have to submit the other materials like Mr. Long said, that's detailed in the ordinance.
Okay. And then the final is the, the, the resolution of the, you know, coming together resolution of the payment in lieu or some solution thereof, right there.
Yeah. And I think that, I think that Mr. Long and I can, can probably pretty easily agree on language that covers that being
Okay.
Essentially deferred to a final resolution at the time of final land development approval.
Okay.
Or prior to, if, you know, I think it'd be something we could probably work on, on the front end of that.
Okay. Mr. Flynn?
Talking about the demolition on Woolerton and Potter Alley, particularly because that's the access to most of the houses. The rear entrance with their parking spots off street on New and also on Minor. The, the demolition, it's important that they stay within the footprint of the, of the property so that people can continue to use their property. Because we don't, we don't want any people not being able to get to their back of their house.
Understood, Mr. Flynn. I should also note that demolition cannot occur until all per, all building permits. I, correct me if I'm wrong, all building permits have been issued and financial security has been posted for the project. So what the borough doesn't want to have happen is what happened to the Warner Theater a long time ago, where demolition of a, actually historic building was done at night. So I, I, I believe the borough has amended their ordinance such that demolition of these buildings cannot occur until we're literally ready to start. And what would happen is the site would be fenced. We would demolish kind of from the, like the Mitch's parking lot and, and pull the buildings in. And for the most part, they're all single story buildings. Mitch's is kind of a story and a half, but that won't be a problem.
Yeah, I just don't want the residents that live on New, they can't get into the back of their house.
Of course, that won't happen.
Because there's three lawyers there and you, you want to deal with them. They're not as kind as Mr. Nagel.
Okay. So can I ask then, we can vote on this tonight with that, with those implied changes that we just discussed?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Any other issues with this? Is there public comment? Mr. Cook?
Eric Cook, South Wall Street. I'm concerned with the traffic flow in the area and whether they'll allow dogs. There's been talk about Chestnut Square. And if you've ever followed a FedEx truck up Gay Street and it stopped dead in front of you to make a delivery at Chestnut Square, I'd like to know where, one, what the address of this building will be. Nobody in here will be deciding that. But if it's not Potter Alley, your delivery guys are going to be going to wherever the address is. And I see a problem there. Thanks.
Is there, is there response to, to traffic flow, delivery trucks or trash trucks?
All, all of the, all of the, we have a drop off area here. The main lobby of the building is the corner of Potter and Market. I, I believe the post office provides the address of the building. So, you know, we'll ultimately get that from the post office. But this is the drop off. This is also kind of where, you know, people will be moving in and out of the building because the main elevators are right here. So they will not be parking on Market Street. They'll come in, run their packages in. We'll have a delivery area, we'll have a package area, Amazon area, and they'll be leaving. And again, we've done traffic studies, all that information has been hashed out with the planning commission. We're moving the telephone pole, electric pole that's here, we're moving the one down here. We've created this radius, I think after we met with Mr. Flynn, who lives right here. This radius might even get a little bit more to make sure all the traffic. Traffic will not be allowed to go down to Mar, to Price Street. It'll, you know, delivery traffic will run around and then, and then out. So we vetted all of that and talked about it at length with the planning commission.
Thank you.
And just one, one thing I'm going to clarify, there was, it was brought up by the planning commission. It was discussed about evaluating Potter Alley to see if we can make it one way. So you can only go one way north out to Market Street. So obviously it's not part of this project, but it's something that we can have the police department and our traffic engineer look at to see if it would be a viable option. And I will work with the county to determine what the address will be for this and we'll supply that to the post office. But it's going to be a Market Street address. Unfortunately, we can't make it a Potter Alley address.
Okay. All right. If there's no further questions, discussion or comments, I think it would be appropriate to make a motion to adopt this resolution with the changes talked about tonight and discuss with legal counsel.
Show move, Mr. Stefano, second.
All right. We have a motion to second. Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Yep. Thank you. Yeah. Moving on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. Any issues with the consent agenda, folks? Would you like to make?
Make a motion that we accept it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second to accept our consent agenda. Without further discussion, I don't see any. We, Mr. Metric, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight is other business. A is to approve our August 15th to 16th Borough Council meeting minutes. Who did the last thing? Oh, that was under consent. Sorry. So that was under consent. My bad. Okay. But, but the other business that we have to announce the purpose of our September 20, 2023 executive session, we're going to be meeting, following this meeting, Borough Council and mayor will be meeting to discuss a contract, employment contract. All right, there's no other business. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.